All right. Get a little closer here. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Board of Selectmen and School Committee Joint Meeting, Wednesday, September 4th, 2019. Before we get started, would you please all stand with me and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, very good. Before we get started, what I'm gonna kinda do is outline the flow of this evening's meeting to try to make it nice and easy for the candidates and to explain for the residents. So first and foremost, we're actually taping tonight because there's a conservation committee and we didn't wanna step on their toes, so we are taping for the residents. It will be aired sometime very shortly for the video. So, why don't we get started? What we're gonna do is, first and foremost, let's do a quick introduction of all the board members, for the joint board members, and I'm gonna explain why we're here. So, Sister Stan, wanna start with yourself, please? Quick introduction?
John Stadman, School Committee.
Shannon Demos, School Committee.
Jamie Cutler, School Committee.
Keith Sullivan, School Committee.
Jay Kelly, Board of Selectmen.
Mark Kravitz, Selectmen.
Brian Dick, Selectmen.
Emery Strannick, Selectmen.
Jane Miller, Selectmen.
Okay, very good. Okay, just short, sweet, I'm gonna explain why we're here, again, just for the audience and for the candidates alike. So, the Tuxbury Public Schools received a notice from Mr. Dennis Francis of his resignation as position of School Committee Chairman on Wednesday, July 24th, effective July 24th. On the 25th, the Superintendent, Mr. Christopher Malone, Christopher Malone, notified the Chair requesting a joint meeting, that's why we're here today, with the Board to appoint, I'm gonna actually say the word "elect," elect the vacancy for the School Committee member created by the resignation of Mr. Dennis Francis. And just a quick plug, Mr. Dennis Francis, unbelievable individual and volunteered in this community for many, many, many years, so I wish Mr. Dennis Francis well. On Tuesday, August 13th, the Board of Selected approved 5-0 to meet, and here we are today. So, we have four candidates submitted their applications by the deadline, it was Friday, October, uh, Friday, October, Friday, August 30th, by 12 o'clock. So this evening, this collective board, I'm gonna refer to it as Collective Board, we're gonna do introductions of the candidates, and that's just gonna consist of coming up in the order that we receive the applications, so we're not, so we just try to keep it straight. So the order that we receive the applications is the order that we're gonna go for the, not only for the introductions but for the interviews, so we're gonna do five-minute introductions, and here's the deal, you may or may not take five minutes. Some folks take two minutes, some folks take five minutes, but we will put the watch on. So if you're very quick, that's fine, but again, just kinda introduce yourself, why you have the experience, and why you're seeking to be on the School Committee. So we're gonna do introductions, we're gonna conduct interviews. So when the four members are done with the introductions, we're gonna conduct interviews. So we're gonna set aside 15 minutes for each candidate, but same deal, we're gonna just open it up for random questions to the Collective Board. We may have a question, we may not have a question, and just for the residents, I can tell you that the application and the resumes were extremely thorough, so very impressive resumes and applications for the four, for the four candidates tonight, so I thank you guys, and so we have a lot of information on the candidates. That's why we might ask a question or two, or we might have 10 questions, depending what mood Mr. Kravitz is in. So, once we're done conducting interviews, again, 15 minutes per candidate, what we're gonna do is we wanna go right into nominations, and what we do is called a roll, it's actually called a roll call vote. So what we're gonna do is, out of respect to the School Committee, 'cause that's what we're feeling, we're gonna start with Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Sullivan is the Chair of the School Committee, and go down to the School Committee, and then we're gonna bounce to myself, the Chair, and we're just gonna go, why don't we keep it nice and easy, I'm gonna go to myself, Mr. Kravitz, Mr. Brian Dick, Ms. Strannick, and finally, last but not least, Ms. Jane Miller. And here's the deal, what we're looking for is required, is five like nominations, is the majority, and then he or she would be appointed, elected, I'm gonna say the word "elected," to the School Committee. So, just to kinda have ground rules is, we're gonna do round one, and each member of the Collective Board will nominate one, one applicant, and if it's, if majority, which is five like nominations, is not achieved, what we're gonna do is take the top three candidates and go to round two, and then we're gonna take the, the, the two top candidates, if there's a tie, and go, or not a tie, and we're gonna go to round three. So hopefully that makes sense, I know it's a little bit confusing, but the bottom line is, our roles and responsibilities as elected officials for the Board of Selectmen and for the School Committee, and with a vacancy of this, of this type, is to ultimately elect, not appoint, elect the next School Committee member, as I said, so it's our roles and responsibilities to do that. So again, we need five nominations, so if, we have five nominations for Bob, as an example, then what we'll do is we'll make it official, and last but not least, what we'll do is elect, we'll take a vote to elect that candidate. So, I think I covered all the ground rules, hopefully we wanna make this very, as painless as possible, 'cause when the candidates, when you put your name up there, we all know as elected officials how hard it is to put your neck out there, so we all, as a Collective Board, commend all you folks who put your neck, names in there, and wanting to volunteer, especially for the School Committee, it's no easy task, 'cause these folks can say, so it's just really commendable that all four of you stepped up, and like I said, very impressive resumes, very, very impressive. So, if there's no questions from the Board, what I'd like to do is maybe take a vote just to kind of approve the process outlined, however, if anything comes up and we need to adjust, we'll just put our collective heads together and adjust accordingly. So I know I went very fast, as usual, but is there any questions from the Collective Board? We'd like seeing none. Okay, with that being said, do I have a motion to approve, we're gonna kinda approve the process that I just outlined?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the process outlined.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I got a second, Ms. Strannick, all those in favor?
Aye.
She has, thank you very much. Okay, with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Jane Miller, what we're gonna do is phase one, the introduction phases, and she's gonna call the candidates one by one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to welcome Lindsay Robinson to come forward.
Do you want me to move stance?
Please have a seat, please be comfortable, yes. So if you can give us your present, your introduction for five minutes, that would be great.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Lindsay Robinson, I've been a resident of Tuxbury for 27 years, actually this month. My family, we're all a product of the Tuxbury education system, we've been very involved with the community and in extracurricular activities. In addition, I didn't, I went to Tuxbury Public Schools all the way through eighth grade, I attended Chiashin Tech in Bel Airker for high school, but during my high school years, I still stayed very involved with the Tuxbury Public Schools and volunteered after school for two years at the Trahan Elementary School. Upon graduation from high school, I attended St. Anzlem College in Manchester, New Hampshire, I was a politics major and a Russian Area Studies minor. It was my time at St. Anzlem College where I began advocating for students, I served in a variety of leadership positions, including student body president for two years, as well as a national president for two years of a national student organization. I advocated on the local level with the administration directly, at the state level with elected state officials, and on the national level with the legislative and executive branch, specifically the Office of the Vice President, and I also met with the Secretary of Education twice. The issues that I advocated on behalf of students included increased funding for educational resources, ensuring that learning environments were up to date with current technology, that students received education that prepared them either for college or the workforce, depending on what their individual needs were, and that all student needs were met regardless of their individual challenges, including physical, mental, developmental, financial limitations, sexual orientation, and race. I believe, and I still believe, that all students should have access to a safe learning environment. This mostly stemmed from growing up in a home with siblings of different educational needs. Both, I'm a middle child, but both my older sister and my younger brother suffered from severe learning disabilities, and me, on the other hand, I needed to be challenged educationally. I watched both my siblings grow up and struggle immensely, they needed to put in so much more effort than myself and even a lot of my classmates. But because of the education that they received from Tuxbury, there are two children who people did not think even had a chance now have college and even master degrees and work full-time. In addition to the education that I've already mentioned, I graduated from UNH School of Law right after I graduated from St. Anzlem College, I went straight through. I now practice law in Nashua, New Hampshire, and I am ready at this point to give back to my community. I focused so much of my entire life up to this point on my education, I knew since I was seven years old that I wanted to be a lawyer, and so especially during law school, I, I took a backseat to some of my extracurricular activities. In addition to practicing law at a firm in Nashua, I advocate on behalf of abused and neglected children on a state and a federal level. It's an exciting time to be a part of the School Committee, the Governor just passed a budget that's giving the Tuxbury Public Schools a very generous package, and I would love to be a part of making sure that it's divided up appropriately, as well as the new elementary school, a part of planning for it, but also the building of, of the school itself. It would be an absolute honor and privilege to serve on the School Committee. I would be grateful for the opportunity to give back to a town that has given me and my family so much. I would not be where I am today in my personal and as well as my professional career if it wasn't for my foundation from here in Tuxbury. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Can I go? You can clap, clapping's fine. I'd like to welcome Patricia Saki to come forward, please, and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Hello, I'm Patricia Saki, but I go by Patty. I am a resident, I was born and raised in Tuxbury, I'm a product of the Tuxbury School System, Class of 87, TMHS. I was very fortunate to be inspired by my English teacher at Tuxbury High, and by the wonderful teachers to go on to be a teacher myself. I'm here as a community member, a resident, an alumni, a parent, and as an educational professional. My kids attend the Tuxbury Schools, my son is at the Tech now, but my daughter's at the Ryan School, and, you know, while she is very high achieving, my son is, has Asperger's, so I got to really work with some of the educational professionals to really help him thrive and grow, and now he has, you know, YouTube channel with thousands of followers just because he had people to really be there for him. Let's see, I have a bachelor's in English, a master's in education, and also in English. I've been teaching for 17 years in a variety of venues. I started out at a small rural school in Ware, New Hampshire, about 300 students, it was a regional high school, and from there, I taught at Pinkerton Academy in Derry for eight years. That school has about 3,200 students, where I taught from the AP-level seniors to, you know, the, the seniors who, you know, really didn't wanna be there, so I've experienced all aspects of kids. Most recently, I was at the Academy for Science and Design in Nashua, New Hampshire, it's a blue ribbon school, number one in New Hampshire, I think it's number eight in the country, and I was very fortunate to build their humanities program. Currently, right now, I am actually working in Tuxbury, but not in the school system, I work at the, it's a program called Center Point, it's a residential therapeutic program on the grounds of the Tuxbury Hospital, serving adolescent males who have undergone some kind of traumatic experience in their lives, so it's kind of teaching and counseling at the same time, we bring school to them, and, let's see, I'm nervous.
You're doing a very good job, you can't tell.
We know how that feels.
Let's see, I believe that all children have the ability, the desire, and the right to a high-quality, safe education that will position them to be competitive in today's, you know, globally competitive world. I believe I have a lot to offer, multiple perspectives, you know, as a parent, as a resident, as an educational professional, I'm certified in Massachusetts and New Hampshire, and I'm also special ed certified, and I'm on the National Board of English Teachers, so I have to keep current with educational trends, so that's something that's always, you know, on my radar. But I think I have a lot to offer, and I'm happy to finally be able to give back to my community, I've been wanting to do something for quite some time, but I've been taking, my elderly parents have been living with us, so they required a lot of care, but now they don't, so I'm able to kind of give more of myself to other places, and I'm eager to offer my services, and I would be honored to be considered a member.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to welcome Bridget Garabedian to come forward, please, and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Hi, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you all today, it is nervous, nerve-wracking. I hope you have an understanding of my dedication and commitment to our schools after looking at my application, through my volunteering on PAC boards for the past five years in three of our schools, school council in two schools, participating in bringing the first STEAM Lab in town online, my work with the Friends of the New Elementary School Committee, my employment as a substitute nurse where I've had the opportunity to work in all seven of the schools in our district, the several new staff hire committees I've worked on, and I've gained unique insight into our school district. I'm passionate about our educational system and about our town, I've worked hard to improve the school experience for our kids and families in Tuxbury, and I now hope to participate in a bigger way as a member of the School Committee. I'm active in our community, I show up to events, if I say I'm gonna be somewhere, I'm there. My husband coaches, he builds sets for school plays, my children are in athletics, drama, music in the town, and we participate in a lot of town events whenever we can as a family. Along the way, parents, staff, community members have shared their personal experiences in the schools with me, I believe I have the insight, trust, and understanding of our families that a School Committee member needs to be effective. I complete tasks, I'm accountable for commitments that I make, and I'm a great motivator of other people. As a committee member, I'm collaborative and I'm loyal, I'm supportive of majority decisions and I don't hold a grudge, I'm reflective, I'm thoughtful with my input, and I'm creative with solutions. I listen when others speak, and I truly seek to understand alternative points of view. I appreciate and respect the experience of others, and I think it's important to hear and seek out the input of teammates that may have more experience than I have. I pay attention to the growth and to the changes in our schools. I have much respect and admiration for the current and former committee members who have contributed to bringing our schools to where they are today. I'm very impressed by the range of experience on our committee, and I know that my healthcare experience and currency with the school communities will make for an incredibly well-rounded committee. I know it's clear that I love the kids, I love the schools, I participated in lots of ways to create a better experience, but I have also participated in supporting our teachers and administrators. While on the pack, I was able to witness firsthand the day-to-day operations in the schools, where we were able to purchase computers, teaching materials, support the MTSS initiatives, buy furniture, and I believe that all of my experience will make a difference as a member when addressing the fiscal oversight of the schools. There's an ongoing need to scrutinize the budget, to continue to be transparent with our community and to spend less money, to find solutions to fiscal problems, and to do this while assuring the least amount of impact to our students. As a member, I would advocate for more aggressive efforts in grant funding, specifically targeting state mandated curriculum programs. My experiences provided me with the opportunity to not only understand what the line items are on the budgetary spreadsheet, but to understand how that money is applied, I know how far $1,000 can go in a school. I understand that when it's difficult and decisions need to be made, I know how it will impact the school and how it will impact the students. I have built trust and credibility with parents, teachers, and administrators, and our projected enrollment decreases, the district will need to look ahead at how we can continue to provide the same services with less money. I have good working relationships with our state representatives and senator, and I know they have been very supportive of our schools, but I would reach out for more support and ask for more access to services. I thought carefully before I applied to this committee, I'm aware of the work involved, I recognize the challenges that I may face if I'm appointed, I will participate fully, I do intend to run for election in the spring, and I'm aware it's only for a one-year term. Thank you for hearing me today, I could honestly talk more about the schools, I really love them, I love our district, I want our kids to be set up for success and have equitable access, I want to support our teachers, recognize them for the amazing work that they're doing every day, and I wanna be a part of securing and retaining our finances while not disrupting the students' learning experience. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Garabedian. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to welcome Scott Wilson to come forward and tell us about himself.
Getting old, new glasses.
I understand.
Good evening, thanks for the opportunity to speak with you, surprised that I'm feeling any nerves at all, 'cause I've done this before, but I am really nervous. I wanna tell you through three things, one, I wanna tell you who I am, I wanna tell you why I'm interested in doing this, and thirdly, I wanna tell you why I think I'm a good candidate. First, I live in Tuxbury, I'm married to Betsy, we've been married for 23 years, she's a lifelong educator, she's currently teaching in the Bedford School System, she is what I refer to as my favorite teacher, I learn a lot of lessons from her, and we often talk about education because she is so passionate about it. I have two sons that attended the Tuxbury Public Schools, my son Tyler's a sophomore at Penn State University, and my son Colby is a freshman at Springfield College. I've been at Verizon for the last 25 years, I currently lead a team of 200 associate employees. They handle the FiOS in the central west Mass part of the state, I pride myself on building a strong team, we work through union issues, contract issues, customer issues, and just issues from within the community from the work that we're doing. In terms of our community, the last 16 years, I've volunteered quite a bit in this community, I've spent six years on the Board of Selectmen, three years on the Finance Committee, done a lot of volunteer reading at the Doing, and also at the Ryan School, I've participated in the Career Day. When the high school vote came about, I remember running, when I was running for Board of Selectmen, Jamie actually grabbed me and asked me if I was gonna support the schools, and I promised him I would, and that I would put every effort into seeing that, that it passed, and I worked with a tremendous team that worked tirelessly to make sure that that happened, and it was an outstanding outcome. I worked on the DCF Board in Lowell for five years, we, you know, our two biggest accomplishments were kids that were aging out of foster kid, the foster program, we were able to establish a house, a home for the women, and also a home for the young men, and which still exists today. I founded the Tuxbury Chiefs AAU baseball program in town, which still exists today, I ran it for four years and did a lot of coaching in that program, and Nick Bain has taken it to a whole nother level, I'm so proud of him. I coached in Tuxbury Youth Basketball for 11 years, I actually still coach in Tuxbury Basketball, my kids have since graduated, but for the last five years, I've, I really have enjoyed working with the kids, and I like to give back, so I've spent time teaching the kids and spending time with different coaches, sometimes being the head coach of those teams as well. I was also a member of the Tuxbury Youth Board of Directors for baseball, and I was in that program and coached in that program for 12 years. So why am I interested? One, I have the time, both of my kids have gone off to college, and Betsy and I have the opportunity now to spend some time doing some of the things that we're passionate about, I feel there's a need. Typically, when I've looked to get involved, when I got involved with the Board of Selectmen, we were in probably the worst financial state we had been in, it was a great opportunity to step up, it was a challenge, but we were able to, you know, I was able to work with a great board, and we made some great strides. Likewise, with the Baseball Board of Directors, I got involved in that right after the financial scandal, when people were stealing money from the kids, and people thought I was crazy to get involved, and I said, "Well, this is the time they need me, so this is the time you step up and get involved." It's a lesson I learned young from my parents, it's something I take a lot of pride in, is not being a complainer on the sidelines, but getting involved and trying to help be part of the solution. I think there's an opportunity to continue to do the things that the Tuxbury School System has done well, I've seen a lot of them over the years, but it's also a time to take a look at some of the things that aren't going great, and take a look at those processes or programs, and see if there's an opportunity for us to do better. I mean, that's part of, a big part of what the job is. And then finally, why I think I'm a good choice for the job, is that I bring a lot of experience, I've been on the boards in town, I've taken, you know, the, the beatings, and I've had, I've enjoyed great success with the boards, and I think being able to handle that and the challenges is, is a big thing. I've also had a lot of opportunity to work with the unions in town, and the contracts, and making sure that that process goes smoothly, so that when we finalize a contract, people feel good about where we ended up. During my time on the board, we were able to increase the spending for the schools each year, thus lowering class size, increasing the spending per pupil, per student, I know Emery was a big proponent of that, you know, back in the day, and that was an important thing for us to move our schools forward in that way. I'm passionate, I've probably had agreements, disagreements with several of you up, up there at, at the table, I don't like to back away from those, I think it's a great opportunity for us to learn from each other, and it's a great, it's never a bad thing, and I could stand up and hug all, every one of you, because that's what we do. You work through the issues, you understand what's going on, and you figure out the best solution, and you make the best choice. Whatever I do, I do 100%, I'm all in, I like to be involved in every committee, I like to attend meetings, I like to hear what's going on, and I think that's important. And then finally, I think I bring leadership, I'm not afraid to stand out in front and be a leader, and I can also sit in the back and be a member of a team, and help the team move in the right direction. Whenever there are successes, it's collaborative, and it's all about the team, it's not about one individual. I had a lot of team successes when I was on the Board of Selectmen, and my individual failures were mine, when I stepped out on an issue, those were for me to take those bullets, 'cause that's what I wanted to do, but I always took a lot of pride in that board, there was not a selfish member, everyone was pulling for each other, and I think that's really important. So, those are the reasons why I think I'd be a great candidate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
All right, wanna move to?
Sure, so we're gonna move along to the interview portion of the evening. We would like to welcome Ms. Robinson to come back and open it up to board members for some questions for you.
All right, why don't we start?
Would you, would you let me to moderate this portion, or are you gonna?
Sure.
No, you can do it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I can, yeah, we can, how about we start on the School Committee, any questions? We're gonna have a quiet bunch tonight?
I'll, I'll ask the first question, I guess, Mr. Chairman. Lindsay, obviously, thank you, all four of you, thank you, this is great for us, it's great for the community to have four such wonderful people, candidates that represent a really diverse group of people that are, you know, have different qualifications and experiences, so on behalf of myself and the school, and I'm sure the Selectmen, thank you very much, I hope we can make you feel as welcome as possible and as painless as possible. So, we've heard a lot about the school, and I'm gonna pose this question to everyone in all fairness, what do you think the single greatest benefit will be of our new elementary school?
Well, having attended the elementary school myself, or one of the elementary schools myself many years ago, I definitely think the infrastructure needs to improve as a whole, I benefited from attending the, the Ryan right after it was, it was built, and the Wynn itself, and now we have a beautiful new high school, but our elementary schools are definitely lacking, in the sense of the, the technology that it's able to provide, but also the learning environment in itself, not just for the students but also the teachers. So I think this is a great next step for the town in providing another additional resource to our, our, our kids.
Thank you. Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Robinson, you have an outstanding resume, definitely, you're all excellent candidates for sure, but as a School Committee member, what would be your role, how do you envision your role in relation to the administration, the top administration, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and the Director of Special Services, Student Services?
So I enjoy working as a part of a team and coming together as a collective body on different improvements that I think are necessary, I am a big proponent for checks and balances, I think it's important for the School Committee to come together as a united front on the issues that they think are facing our education system, but obviously the ultimate decision is up to the superintendent, so I, I look forward to working closely with the superintendent and the rest of the administration to address those needs, but also ensuring that the super- to address those needs, but also ensuring that the superintendent is doing his job and ensuring that everyone is being heard.
Thank you.
How about on the Selectmen side?
I have a question.
Miss Spiller.
Tell us a little bit about how you handle adversity.
So I definitely grew up in a home that faced many challenges. I had lost my father at a young age. My mom worked many jobs to support my family and to ensure that our life wasn't being compromised in any way for what we had gone through as children especially. My mom was a school nurse here in Tewksbury at the Trahan Elementary School. And then she went on and still currently teaches at Shawshing Tech in the nursing department. So she worked around the clock. And part of the reason why I'm a workaholic myself is I saw my mom do it firsthand. I wouldn't be the person I am today if I hadn't gone through what I did as a child. Definitely was challenging at times. But I also feel like I am a better leader, lawyer, family member, friend because of what I had gone through. I feel like I can relate more to individuals because everyone has a story. Everyone has a struggle that they're facing. And so I would love the opportunity to represent those individuals especially. It started probably back when I was in high school. Both my siblings, because of their learning disabilities unfortunately, were bullied in elementary school. So I took it upon myself when I was in high school to ensure that the children who didn't have a seat at the lunch table could sit next to me. And it was almost a way for me giving back to my siblings who didn't have someone in their class who did that for them. And I have continued that long into my adult and professional career.
Thank you.
Very good. Additional questions from the board?
I have a question.
Mr. Kravman.
So if we were to appoint you to fulfill this term until, would you run in the upcoming election to stay on and stay with the committee?
I have been very interested in running in or for a position. Actually, back when I was in college, I had pulled the paperwork from the town hall as I was interested back then. But due to my commitments to my education and my campus community, I didn't feel like it was the right time. Now that I am graduated from law school, I've achieved my lifelong goal of becoming an attorney and I have established a career for myself. I do feel like this is the right time and I'm able to give 100%. I'm not the type of person who will do anything if I can't give fully to it. And I would be very interested. But I would turn to the members of the school committee to determine if I was appointed, if I was a good fit. I never do anything for a title. And I rely more on the people that I'm working with and serving to tell me if they even think I'm a good fit for a position.
Thank you. Very good. All right, I'll jump in quick. My question's going to be around money, 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 the almighty dollar. So in the school committee, like the Board of Selectmen, we're so challenged where services versus tax dollars. And in any town or community, the school budget is usually the highest budget. I know it's north of 60% out of a $115 million budget. So the question is, how do you balance the needs of the kids, additional services, tools, versus no one has a blank check in any line of business? So how would you balance or what's your thought process around balancing the budget when it comes to this, if you're on the school committee?
It's incredibly important to make sure that the budget is balanced and that all needs are met, not just the school committee. I mean, there are other issues that are facing this town. I was happy to see that Governor Baker had given additional resources to Tewksbury, including 13, I believe 13 million to Tewksbury Public Schools. There are also additional resources out there for schools besides the money that's provided directly from taxpayers as well as the state itself. So I would actively look into additional resources, whether it's grants and funding of such. But also on a federal level, I think more needs to be done, especially for our local school systems.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So Lindsay, thank you for taking the time to come in. I know this is a big step for you. It makes me truly feel a little aged. Everyone coming in here, the four candidates are all going to have a strength. Could you tell me what you bring to this board that would be the biggest impact for the students of our community? Because when it comes down to it, that's what we're sitting on here for, right? What, what could you bring to the table that you think would have the biggest, most positive impact for them?
Yeah, I would 100% agree. The candidates who have applied are incredibly impressive. And everyone brings a unique background to the table. I think what makes me unique would be my ability to listen and to advocate from what I've heard from people in the community. I have, in every leadership position I've ever held, really take the time to meet with individuals to ensure that they feel like their voice is being heard because so many people feel like no one is out there listening to them. And then taking their stories and going to the proper individuals, sharing it. Because I feel like change is only made when you give tangible examples. So I would take, listen to the people in the community and then take it directly to those who I feel would be necessary.
Thank you.
Additional questions from the board?
Jamie stole my question, but I would just like to say, thank you very much for coming in. And I appreciate all the time and effort you put together, giving us all this information.
Very good. Ms. Robinson, thank you very, very much. Thank you, good job.
We'd, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to welcome Ms. Saki to come back up for a brief interview.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. I'd like to open up to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pose the same question to you, Patty. What do you think will be the single greatest benefit from our new elementary school for our children?
Well, as someone who went to Tewksbury Schools, I went to North Street School from kindergarten through grade five. So I had the benefit of being with, you know, in the same building, with the same group of kids and really forming this community. And I really felt close to those kids and I felt a part of something. And, you know, for my children, you know, my son went to, he went to the Doing. No, he didn't, I can't even think. He went to Heathbrook and then he went to Trahan. So I just feel like he didn't have the benefit of that, you know, continual community that I had. And I feel like one of the biggest benefits is wrapping the community together again and having everyone be kind of as one, not to be sappy, but.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. I'll ask my same question too. As a school committee member, your relationship to the administrative team, superintendent, assistant superintendent?
Well, I, I think what it really comes down to is that we're all on the same side. And we all want the best for the kids. And like you said, there is no blank check. I mean, if we could just write checks and pay for everything we wanted, that would be fantastic. I think, you know, being able to communicate, compromise, work together, and hear everyone's point of view and understand what their needs are, I think that is, you know, what is going to make, you know, everyone work together and be successful because we all want the same thing.
Thank you. Very good. Ms. Miller, do we have a common theme?
I do like to ask the same question out of fairness. Thank you again for your application. Please tell us a little bit about how you handle adversity.
Well, I like to handle, well, I don't like to handle adversity. But when I encounter adversity, I try to handle it with an open mind and a little bit of a sense of humor. Because that is what, you know, you know, if you can, you know, in a stressful situation, if you can share a laugh with someone, that instantly drops the tension of the situation and you can kind of approach each other as people again. Personally, you know, I grew up in Tewksbury, idyllic neighborhood, you know, manhunt, baseball in the circle at the end of the street. So, you know, I didn't really suffer as a kid. You know, you come in when the street light goes on. So I had a really, you know, I guess adversity-free childhood. But, you know, as a teacher, I see issues, you know, I see bullying and, you know, with my own son, with Asperger's. You know, he's not the most, you know, socially brilliant person, although, you know, he's very smart in his own way. But, you know, he, he gets picked on sometimes. But, you know, it's just trying to understand where people are coming from and to just keep the dialogue open, I think. As long as you're willing to listen and understand, I think, you know, adversity is something that, you know, it's, it's not a wall, it's a door. You know, you, you can open that door and you can go through it if you really, really want to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kravman?
Yeah, I'm going to stay on the same theme. One of the things I've always challenged with is that when we have election season and we have so many qualified people in this town and yet we, people don't step forward. So I'm most curious of the reason why. And would you step forward?
I definitely would step forward. And I, I feel like, you know, education is, you know, it's, it's what I know best. And I feel like this is a really fantastic way I can, I can serve my community to the best of my ability. And, you know, I have the time now. I have 100% that I can give. And I'm really, you know, I've, I've always been wanting to do this. And now the time is here. And when I saw that pop up in my inbox, I'm like, I'm going to do it. And I would definitely run again, so in case that wasn't clear.
Following a common theme, I'm going to go next. You know, I'm going to bring the budget up again because I cannot emphasize even sitting on this board how challenging it is. And remember, at the end of the day, the school committee will make recommendations, but the town via our government will ultimately vote on annual town elections. So again, the question's around the budget. How, how do you balance or try to balance the services, the needs for the kids to make things bigger, better, faster versus having a, having a budget and trying to keep it in check? Because remember, we just voted for the elementary school, which is a very, very good thing. However, that's going to be spread across the residents very, very soon. So that's going to be, you know, even at the Board of Selectmen, we're trying to tap the brakes, so to speak. So again, what's your philosophy around the budget? How do you keep control and balance that budget?
Well, I think one of the, one of the issues that we've faced in, in this town is just making sure that we have the buy-in of all the residents. I mean, you'll have people say, well, you know, I don't have any kids in the school system, so I don't want my tax dollars to go up. But, you know, the reality is, all of these kids, they're all of our kids. So I think if we just make sure that the message is clear that, you know, this really is for everyone. It's not just for this batch of kids that's graduating in this year. It's for all of us because these kids are going to go on to hopefully do what we're doing and maybe work in the town and eventually give back. So to try to, I mean, we have to balance the budget, but to try to make people see it as an investment rather than an expense.
Good answer. And just right off, Stamos?
Same thing for me. We have four very highly qualified candidates sitting here today. What would separate you from the pack? What is that one attribute, attribute that you would bring to the table, to this committee, that would positively impact the students of our community?
Well, I am, you know, I've devoted my life to education. It's, it's my passion. And I also have the ability to, well, you know, as an educator, you get to deal with all types of people. And not everyone is really nice. And, you know, the parent-teacher nights, I've, I've been there on both sides of the table. And, you know, I have the ability to, you know, listen, understand, and get along and collaborate and to bring different types of people to see eye to eye where they might not have before.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, one quick one. Patty, I did notice, it's kind of interesting. You brought up the, the issue of the promoting trades in your application, which I agree with 100%. You know, we were, we were pushing, pushing, pushing college, college, college down everyone's throat. And obviously, college is not the right fit for everybody. And, you know, personally, I know that from my own two children. You see it with every, you know. So again, if you are to come on the board, how would you see that with your role? How would you promote that in, in, and, you know, help the administration along with that?
Well, I, I think that, you know, again, you know, college isn't for everyone. You know, if you want to become, you know, a teacher or a lawyer or a doctor or something that requires that path, then that's the path that you should take. I think there's kind of like a stigma in society where, you know, if you don't go to college, then, you know, you're, you're making a mistake or, you know, what you're doing with your life isn't as worthy as, you know, getting that bachelor's degree. And I think that is just completely false. And there's a huge lack of trades and qualified people to fill those roles. And, you know, I, I know plumbers who make more than lawyers. So, you know, it's, it's, every, every position is needed and not every position needs a college degree. And there's nothing wrong with that. You know, there's, there's no shame in saying, gee, you know, why don't, why don't we look at this path for you instead of, you know, trying to apply to MIT? You know, it's just, it's a reality. And I think it's something that we should just embrace and foster. And if there's a way we could, I mean, I know we have the tech and they have awesome things there. My son goes there. You know, maybe there are things down the line that we can incorporate, you know, in our own town. I know my son is doing the digital video design over there. You know, why couldn't he do it here? You know, who knows? Maybe that's somewhere we could grow in the future. But it's something that I think is important to just, you know, keep an open mind on.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stafford. Any other questions from the board? Okay, see none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to welcome Mrs. Garabedian to come forward for a brief interview.
Very good. I'd like to open up the board for questions. The collective board.
Good evening, Bridget.
Hi.
What do you feel will be the greatest benefit of our new elementary school?
I think being in the schools, having children that have transitioned in our schools. Certainly, the transitions will likely seem a little bit easier having, given the campus feel that we're going to have with the, where the building's going to be placed. I think, more importantly, I think our teachers who have been teaching on opposite sides of the town and sometimes the curriculums aren't always aligned, bringing them together in the same building under the same roof and working collaboratively, collaboratively together, I think is going to be such an asset for our kids. And I think our families are going to be really happy with that outcome as well. I think it will centralize a lot of our resources and our services that right now are divided in our town.
Right, thank you. Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Yep, thank you, Ms. Kelly. And Bridget, I'll ask you the same question. If you were on the school committee, your role relative to the administration?
Okay, building trust, having transparency, being honest and building relationships with administration so that we can work together in the good times and the bad. Because I think things get hard and I think things can be challenging. And I think if you have that established trust going into some of the difficult times, it helps.
Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Miller?
Bridget, tell us a little bit about how you handle adversity.
So adversity is my job. I, I work in an emergency room. It's a Level 1 Trauma Center. And so I'm comfortable helping others with their own adversity. And I think that has helped me a lot in life to navigate challenges that come up for me. I think I'm really comfortable in that place, in that space of being with people when they're struggling and also in working through some of my own things in life. It's just, that's probably something I'm good at.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Kravman?
Same question. We have four very qualified candidates here. We're going to have to make a difficult choice tonight of selecting one to fill their role until the, the next election. But would you seek election to?
I intend to, yes. And I have a lot of support from family and friends that I think would help me with it because certainly it would be my first go. But I feel prepared because I've worked, you know, closely with other people in their campaigns and I understand the hard work, the commitment that it takes.
Very good. I'm going to bounce to my budget question. How would you make, what's your decision-making when it comes to the budget to make the hard decisions? The kids versus the budget? decisions, the kids versus the budget? What would be your philosophy or how would you handle that?
So a lot of scrutiny. I think, you know, as I mentioned in my introduction, that I think, you know, looking really not at the budget as just numbers, because I think the numbers have direct, you know, direct results, you know, with the students sometimes. And I think I would bring to the table a lot of insight in terms of understanding, you know, when we do have to make cuts, when things do get hard, when our enrollment does go down, where can those cuts come from where it's not gonna impact our students? It's not gonna impact their learning experience. I think that needs to be priority number one, as we cut back, hold back, and tighten our belts.
Okay, very good. Yeah, it's never easy. And seeing our theme, Stamos?
So Bridget, I'll ask you the same question as I asked the other candidates. What would be a unique attribute or strength that you would bring to this committee that would have a positive, direct impact on the students of our community?
So my personal strength, I think, is my level of dedication and commitment, and my currency with the schools, and really understanding what's happening today in our schools, what the culture is like in our schools, and understanding really, truly, you know, what our parents and families, you know, are going through and what they're thinking. And really understanding our staff, and being able to connect across the board.
Awesome. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Brian Dick?
Thank you, thank you. Just wanna be heard. It was America. No, thanks, Mr. Kelly. You lead a great meeting. I just wanted to, my, my question kinda piggybacks on Mr. Cutlass. I, you know, I have a question, a kind of a follow-up. So what, what do you think are the main roles and responsibilities of a school committee member? Like, what do you think? You, you just, you actually just hit one with Mr. Kelly's question on budgeting?
Yeah.
But there's two other main ones that I believe school committees...
Yeah, so budget, hiring and firing our superintendent, and, you know, being accountable to review process there. And then policies, and setting policies. So not going into the schools and saying, jeez, we should change our math curriculum. That's not the school committee's job. School committee helps write policies that help guide our administrators to, you know, make good choices in our schools.
Excellent, excellent, excellent. So my follow-up question is, you know, there's a lot of working together as a group, representing residents, supporting administration, right, Mr. Cutlass?
Yes.
So I guess there's a lot of tricky, I was on school committee for six years, a lot of tricky issues, from a mascot change to supporting computers for standardized testing, challenges around making sure every student has a voice, right? We've had some special education challenges that we're all familiar with, you know, budgeting moves, and union personnel issues. So listening to residents, so let's just say there's a resident that said, hey, maybe a close friend, could be a neighbor, could be someone down the street, says they're not happy with a school principal. And, or they might be outspoken about the superintendent, or maybe another department head. What would your special skill, or how would you handle that situation? Because as a past school committee member for six years, I believe that that is one of the trickiest part of the job, one of the trickiest things of the job. So how would you?
I handle that actually all the time now. I, you know, as a PAC member, I feel like, you know, I am a leader in our schools. And people do come to me, you know, as a substitute, as a nurse, people do come to me. I participate in some 504 IEP, you know, not like real nurses do. But as a sub, you know, I do have some, you know, participation in how those are going. I, I advise everybody the same thing, you know, that there's, there's a way to approach it, there's a chain of command, that, you know, if you're unhappy, you know, with a teacher, then you don't go to the school committee. You would then speak to the teacher, and then maybe speak to the administrator, and then kinda go through the chain of command. Because, you know, we've got some really great people in place that are really able to problem-solve and, you know, navigate, you know, solving some of these problems. So you need to work with them first.
Gotcha, gotcha. So that was my question. I just wanna understand how you would, on that type of a resident issue, you know, a lot of times, maybe a school committee member or a Board of Selectmen might take the challenge and try to solve the issue on the fly. And I believe that's not the right move, right?
No, not at all.
So I think, you know, you gotta listen, but you also gotta let the powers above dictate what needs to happen.
I think it goes back to your initial question. What are your three, your three jobs?
Right, so I appreciate your answer. Thank you very much.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Scott. I think we're good.
All right. Thank you very much, Mrs. Garabedian.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to welcome Mr. Wilson to come back and have a brief interview.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. All right, Mr. Sullivan, you know the drill.
Thank you. Scott, what do you think will be the single greatest benefit of our new elementary school for our students?
I think it, I mean, obviously, it starts with the physical change, kids being able to learn in a safe, clean environment. But I think it goes beyond that. I mean, when you talk about removing a couple of schools from the district, also moving grades from the Dewing and the Heathburg into that school, you'll have some real synergy amongst the teachers, all being under one roof, sharing one curriculum, being able to collaborate before or after school. Equitable class sizes, 'cause if there's a bulge in class size on one side of the town today, and there's less on another side, there's no way to just shift those bodies. Sometimes I guess you have to try and shift teachers. But all those type of things, all the shared learning that can happen under one roof, really set it up to be a fantastic situation for the community.
Thank you. Ms. Kelly?
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Hi, Scott. Thank you. I have the same question, your relationship with the administrative team for our district.
Yeah, it's funny, I mean, I, 'cause I got to sit in the back, I got to hear all the questions a bunch of times. You know, as, I kinda look at it similar to, I would handle my job. I have a boss, I have employees that work for me. But I think they would all tell you that we're a team, we all work together to find solutions to problems. It needs to be collaborative. At the end of the day, I'm responsible for what takes place in my organization, that's my job. So if I was in the school committee, it would be the same thing. At the end of the day, I'm responsible for what's going on in the schools. And there are times you have to hold the administration responsible for different things that are going on. But I certainly would hope that that's in a collaborative manner. You know, I had the opportunity to work with Richard Montori for six years on the Board of Selectmen, and there was, it was very rare that I felt like it was like a boss-employee relationship, that I was Richard's boss. I always felt like we were working together and talking through issues, and there were plenty of times for disagreements. I'm not, I'm not a guy that sits there and just says, yes, this is okay, this is what you wanna do. I was inquisitive, I like to ask questions, I like to make sure I understand why we're doing what we're doing, 'cause at the end of the day, you gotta go out in the community and answer the questions when you're standing at a basketball game, or a track meet, or a play at the schools. Those are all times when you're sort of put in a position that you need to answer those questions.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, James.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. You're gonna get the same question you've already heard four times. How do you handle adversity? Tell us a little bit about that.
Yeah, I, you know what, I think when I'm in an adverse situation, I think I tend to be pretty calm. I like to take, take in the information and listen. I like to understand where someone else is coming from. I think that if you keep your head in those situations, you're able to think through the problem. And sometimes you don't have an answer at the time. I had a forum with, with my garage just the other day, and I had 60 guys standing there. And one of the guys wanted to grandstand and sorta try and call me on the carpet. And I was able to use some humor to diffuse him a little bit, and also set up some time for me and him to have sort of a one-on-one conversation, because it wasn't professional how it went, but I wasn't gonna, you know, fall apart and lose my cool in front of, in front of my whole team. So I think that just keeping your head, staying calm, thinking through it, you get through it. I did, you know, I've done a lot of coaching over the years, and when you're coaching, things can be crazy. You know, things are going up and down the court, and a lot of stuff happening, and you just gotta stay calm, keep the kids motivated, keep them moving in the right direction, and ultimately, you end up where you need to be.
All right, thank you.
How about Mr. Krabman?
You know the question.
What's the question?
Would you, you know, if we were to appoint you to fulfill the rest of this term, would you seek reelection or seek election coming this, in spring?
Yeah, it's funny, when I, when I answered the question on the application, you know, I know I said, you know, it's, I wanna take some time to evaluate it. I think that, you know, based on the conversations I've had over the last couple of weeks, and some of the things I've come to understand, I feel like in seven months, you really wouldn't be able to make the impact that I'd like to make. So I think certainly you would need that one-year term. Though I'm not sure that in 19 months, you can accomplish everything that would need to be accomplished. So my hope would be that I get appointed, and I have an opportunity to make a difference. And then I would need the community to support me and come out and vote for me. Obviously, this April, I didn't choose to run, there was an open seat, I thought we had, you know, strong candidates in play, you know, running. And my goal was get, watching my, my son graduate, so that was my focus. But I've run campaigns before, it's, it's a, it's a time-consuming thing, but certainly I would, I would step up and do that and see if I could make a difference.
Excellent.
All right, my team's gonna be around the budget again. So wants, needs, services, and not having a blank check in the school committee with a large budget. So what's your style or philosophy around handling the budget, managing a budget, versus trying to do the best thing you can for the kids? How do, how would you handle that?
I, I've always taken the approach of exactly what I do at home, which is you gotta prioritize. You gotta set priorities. You're not gonna be able to do everything. In every budget that I've been involved in that's been rolled out, there are things that don't make it, and there are things that do make it, just like at home. There are a lot of things that I'd like, or things that I want, but they just don't fit in the budget. So I think as long as you set priorities and you know what those priorities are, so, you know, in this, in this position, the school committee having their set of priorities, and making sure the administration is aware of what the priorities are, and what we can afford. It doesn't mean that you can, you certainly don't get to do everything you wanna do. You don't get to hire all the people you wanna hire. There's even programming that you'd like to have in your schools that sometimes you're not able to do. As long as the end goal is providing the best education to as many of the kids as possible, I mean, that's really the goal. I know that, I know there are things that get missed, I understand that, and that's why there has to be priorities.
Very good. Thank you. Well, Stamos?
So again, I know you've heard it before, but what would be that unique quality that you would bring to the table that would most positively impact the students?
I would say my leadership, which is just like a, you know, big word, right? I mean, if you go underneath it, I think the things that, that go into my leadership style are that I'm someone who takes the time to listen. I, you know, it's, it's easiest for me to relate this to what I do every day at work. You know, I listen to my people. I took over a garage that was underperforming, with a lot of angry guys that really were very unhappy with Verizon. They thought it was a terrible place to work. And in six short months, we've turned that around. And I've actually asked some of the guys, I'm like, I don't understand, like, why were you guys so mad before? And they're like, no one's listened to us like you have before. We trust you. We feel like when you ask us for something, you're very clear with what you want. And I feel like that's my strength. I use it at work, I use it when I coach teams, I use it, probably not as well with Betsy, when I'm at home, but I do try and use it. I know that's not my strength, but, you know, I think that being able to, to lead, and hopefully, that brings a big benefit to the students of this community.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions from the board? Mr. Brian Dick?
A similar question, ask Mrs. Garabedian. I know she was spot-on on the main responsibilities, I think, or I consider from a school committee member. Do you, do you feel, I'll ask that this, and then, do you feel any one specific is more important than the other, like policy, budgeting, or hiring the superintendent?
No, I think, I think they're all important. I mean, I think certainly you hope that you're not in a position where you have to be hiring and firing a superintendent. That's always a difficult time, that process to replace that person is challenging. But you do have to set clear expectations, and you have to make sure that the administration is working in the direction that the committee feels is responsible and the right thing to do. So I think that that is critically important, but it doesn't rise above the programming and what you're providing to the students, 'cause, you know, that's what, that's what the parents are feeling every day, is how they're, the experience that they're having in the Tewksbury Schools.
Right. I agree. So the, some of the things that I had to deal with, right, back in the day, a policy that's not set by the school committee, you, you might have a weigh-in on it. And I'm thinking of a couple off the top of my head, but like, I know you can approve fees and things like that, but one of the big, I'm off the school committee, but I still get the complaints about the park, the parking fee, right? The parking fee, or graduation, how graduation is held indoors, or the gowns have changed from red to blue, you know, guy, girl, whatever. It's different right now. So those are, those are tough issues that come up, and there's a million other ones. But how do, how do you, what's your super skill that you would bring to the table in kind, kind of working through those issues where you're hearing the residents, you're hearing your spouse, you're hearing, you know, the reason why that was made, was made by maybe the principal? How, how would you communicate to the resident and then back to the administration? How would you work through those difficult issues?
And, it's funny, I've been off the Board of Selectmen for four years, but people still approach me with issues. And they hadn't brought the parking fees at the high school to my attention. So, yeah, I, I think that you're not gonna agree with every policy that exists, and, but I think that you have to present a united front with your committee, one. And I think that, two, you have to work with the administration when there's a policy that maybe could be improved or changed. But, you know, I know that, and I guess I'll just use my past experience doing some of this stuff. Often, and Anne Marie, you'll remember this, when we first got on the Board of Selectmen and we had a different town manager, you know, the issues came to us. And the expectation was that we would chase the issue down, and there would be times that I'd be working an issue, and Anne Marie would be working an issue, and Todd would be working the same issue. And it was chaos. And then Richard came in and said, no, the issue's coming through me. And, you know, I would talk to residents and say, hey, I've referred the issue to Richard. If he doesn't get back to you in 24 hours, let me know, and I'll be happy to reach out to him and find out what's going on. You know, because if we're chasing all those issues, and we're each doing our own little thing to try and fix those issues, it's gonna be, the, the way we do it is gonna be very inconsistent and, and not very good for the community. You have to let, you know, the administration chase down the issues, the, you know, the spearhead. We certainly are a conduit to bring them issues, because we're out in the community. Hopefully, we're out in the community at, at events, or games, or whatever it may be. And you gotta bring those issues back, so they, they understand what, what residents are frustrated about, but we shouldn't be chasing them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Very good. And I think that brings up our time.
Yes, it does.
The bell went off.
The bell went off.
The bell went off. Thank you very much.
He's got one minute left. I wrote it all down.
I'll just say thank you for your time, and thank you to the other candidates, too. I think they're all fantastic, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So that's gonna bring us into the election, actually, it's gonna bring us into the nomination phase. So before we get to the nomination phase, I'm gonna say a few words, and I'm gonna let the, Mr. Keith Sullivan, the chair of the school committee, say a few words. I mean, I think we were all witness tonight. Listen, we didn't wanna throw any curveballs, and I think sometimes it's unfortunate that Ms. Robertson had to go first, but again, we tried to be so fair, you could see, there was no curveballs here, you know, straight up. And we didn't have a plan to ask the same questions, but I just wanted, if a committee member asked a question, you can kinda see my theme tonight. No curveball, straight up, and just unbelievable for... So, um, I just wanted to say a few words before I kick off the nomination phase, where again, where we'll do roll calls. So at this point, I'm gonna pause for a second and kinda turn it over to Mr. Sullivan if he has any words before we jump into the fun.
Uh, I think, as I said earlier, I alluded to, um, thank you very much to all four of you. Um, this is a very difficult decision. Um, quite honestly, it's one I never thought I would be tasked with. Um, as I said to you, Lindsay, earlier, ironically enough, I sat in that seat not so long ago. Um, didn't get the appointment, continued to work, actually, two of us. One has already been through the school committee and I'm currently here. So, um, I, I can't thank you guys enough. Uh, in addition, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the selectmen, um, most importantly, for welcoming us, wanting us to be part of this committee. And most importantly, I think, doing their diligence. Um, sometimes moving on, you know, isn't the easiest thing to do. We have a lot of wonderful things going on in the school district. Um, everyone on this school committee that I've ever served with, the kids come first. And it always comes down to, how can we improve achievement for all of our kids? All of them, all learners. You know, high functioning, low functioning, middle of the road, it doesn't matter. Um, that's very important to us. Obviously, uh, the community has entrusted a great deal of responsibility, not only to us, but to the selectmen, um, with the new elementary school. Um, it's, I don't think anyone's question, it's gonna help improve achievement in the district. In addition to all the great ideas that we heard tonight, it's also gonna be able to combine services. Hopefully, we're gonna be able to be a little more physically responsible. We're not gonna have aides, some services that are provided at one school, not at the other. So in the addition of having students all in one roof and teachers all on one roof, we're finally gonna have services that we have been breaking up in between four schools. Um, I think that's about all I have. If Mr. Cutlass would like to add anything, the vice chair?
Uh, no, I would just say that, uh, very difficult for us, four outstanding candidates. Uh, Mr. Robinson, gonna have a great career, already has, as a very young person. Mrs. Saki has an educator lifelong. And Mr. Wilson, we know very well, has an excellent job on the selectmen before and worked tirelessly with the high school, and Mrs. Garabedian did on the elementary school as well. So we have a very difficult, uh, job here to do. I think any one of you would be excellent on the committee. But, uh, thank you, Mr. Kelly and Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
All right, very good. So let's go into the nomination phase. So what we're gonna do is, um, I'll respect to the school committee, we're gonna start with Mr., the chair, Mr. Keith Sullivan, and we'll just work down. And then we'll go through myself and, and down. So again, the magic, um, nomination number is five. If we don't get to five in the first round, what we're gonna do is go to the second round and, and we'll continue that way. So, I think we've talked enough, so I'm gonna open it up. Mr. Keith Sullivan, why don't you start up and who is your nomination?
I would like to nominate Mr. Scott Wilson.
Okay. Scottless?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Kelly. I'll nominate, uh, Bridgette Garabedian.
I'll nominate Lindsay Robinson.
I'd like to nominate Scott Wilson.
Okay, I'm gonna nominate Mr. Scott Wilson as well. Mr. Krabman?
Uh, I'd like to nominate Patricia Saki. I'm gonna nominate Mr. Scott Wilson.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Scott Wilson.
And Ms. Jane Miller?
I'll nominate Bridgette Garabedian.
All right, can somebody help with my math?
Mr. Chairman, it appears that there are five nominations for Scott Wilson.[1680.63]